I'm just waiting for the six o'clock to pop up. Of course, when you wait, it takes forever. Well, there it is. It only took five minutes to hit that six o'clock hour, but my name is Julia Johnson. I am Mayor Sejra Woolley, and I would like to call the City Council to order. Tonight, well, as you all know, today is September 11th, and so tonight, before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would be so kind, if we could take just a moment and remember those who not only died on 9/11, but especially those first responders, who perhaps their lives were not lost in the immediate, but they suffered other consequences that took their lives later. So if we could just take a minute to remember them. Thank you. Now if you'll stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll start with roll call, and I see online, we have Councilman Cock, and we also have Councilman Burns, sitting at the dais. Councilman Loy?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Kestie, Councilwoman Diamond, Councilman Henderson, and Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Excellent. Okay, looking for an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, sent by Councilman Henderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, items one through eight. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If I may pull item six for some discussion?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd like to pull item five.
And then item five. You want item five under new business? All right. Okay, moving on, we have items one, two, three, four, and seven. I am looking for an approval. And eight.
I'll make the motion.
Is that Councilman Cock?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Cock, and a second by Councilman Henderson. This will be items one through four and seven and eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. We have item five under new business, but item six, would you like to discuss that now?
Oh, yeah, sure. That'd be great. So I was just going through there. I did get an email with Chief Wagner about that, and it just seemed like it was a rather high price for a stretcher, so I wanted to have some public discussion on that. As it goes through, we'll be able to actually inform the public with your own words. It is $30,000 plus for a stretcher, so that's more than a lot of new cars, and that's what I hear for sure. So cars come with motors, they come with safety features, they come with air conditioning, they come with warranties, and there's a lot of features that are with those. So the curiosity is, why is the stretcher so much? And are they, if they're equipped in all of our units, how much do we have in stretchers alone?
Well, this will put us at four, Glenn? So that'll put us about, well, I would like to say that this is the most expensive one, but this is actually, I think Glenn got even a better deal on this one before we get into the next year prices. But about, I would say, 10 or 15 years ago, the entire county and the industry started going to these because of the cost of injuries. This stretcher here will lift up to 700 pounds for one patient. It prevents us from having to have six, eight, or nine folks do that, and once in a while, we have patients that kind of stretch that limit. This stretcher will allow us to be uniform across the board with all four of our ambulances. We'll have the same one. We'll have the interoperability to be able to switch patients from one rig to another if necessary, or switch out stretchers if we decide to, say, switch from a BLS patient to an ALS or vice versa. This one stretcher alone, at $30,000, seems like a lot. We have, like I was telling the Public Safety Committee prior to this, we have one individual that we've lost her from service for over 11 months now, and that's a big loss of having someone that is that valuable to our system and our service. And the Board of Volunteer Firefighters, that last count was over $37,000 just in medical bills alone for that one shoulder. And when you start looking at a back, you're looking at 100-plus without loss of time and service to the citizens in our department, and with the agency that's already hurting for staffing. This is worth its weight in gold, and I think if you ask any of those folks to back of the room with the blue on right now, they would agree with you. When we started in this system, the stretchers we used were the same ones that the coroners used, and they were very rickety, and oftentimes, as high as they would get, you get into some of the aggregate in asphalt or rocks in some of these driveways, and they tip over. It's also a safety deal for our patients as well, so while I would like to find them cheaper, this is a dollars well spent, and we would recommend moving forward with this. And this is already something that we had originally budgeted with our new ambulance purchases, and what we normally would do is part of that purchase, but when you're spending $353,000 on ambulance and equipment, and then partway through, like you saw in our last purchase, we ended up having to go above and beyond our normal cost of that, and we had to cut out some things, and this was one of them. With that last purchase, we had to go and buy a chassis off of a, not through government contract. We had to get what we could, and we had to increase to a diesel chassis, which we didn't really want, but it was either that or wait another 14 months for delivery. So with this, it's within our budget this year, and outside of that ERNR, and in the future, we will have these included with our normal ambulance chassis purchases as we have in the past. So if that answers your question, sir.
Yeah, it does, and just add some, a little bit more clarity on that. So an injury rate is something that, you know, will increase our insurance as well, but the cost of the insurance has been equated to a direct cost. The indirect cost Stanford did a study on, and it can be four times more than the injury itself. So if we have an injury that's $31,000, you can almost count on that to be 120 with retraining, with bringing in new staff, with misstaff, the things that aren't really equated to that. And that's why equipment that costs that much could be something that is eye-opening, definitely, to the public, but it does, if it's ergonomically sound, makes sense.
And not just the ergonomically sound, and we're talking the savings or the cost of what it's cost us in a year. You also got to talk about, you know, someone that's 20-some years old shouldn't have a shoulder or a back injury, and then how do they recover personally, and we want to take care of these people so we can keep them for 20 years, 25 years, and they can have long and successful careers, and we can support that.
OSHA commissioned a study with Stanford to find that out, and it was pretty alarming on that. So thank you for the clarity, and thanks for the information.
You betcha, sir.
So that was also discussed tonight in the Public Safety Committee meeting. I don't know if the Chair of that meeting, Councilman Burns, I believe that was you, do you want to add further comment regarding that?
My further comment doesn't necessarily have to do explicitly with experience with these, but as somebody who's crushed two discs in my back, I fully understand what a back injury does to somebody and the amount of time it takes to recover. Talking to the firefighters about these, seeing how they operated, I think they are well worth the money. We are saving long-term back injuries for many people by having these, and then having the same line in all units means that there's that easy switch over. If something goes wrong, or somebody hops in the ambulance they're not used to using, then they're going to have the ability to instantly know how to operate, not try to figure it out while somebody's life is hanging in the balance. So I'm definitely in favor going forward. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, do we have a motion to move forward with this?
Motion.
Thanks. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, second by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and of course, item five will be under new business. Moving on to special guests and presentations, and I'm going to make my way down. If Officer Joe Egart could come forward? Am I on? I hope it works. Okay. Welcome, and welcome to the team.
Thank you.
So Joe, or Joseph?
Joseph.
Okay. If you raise your right hand.
All right.
Thank you. I, Joseph Egart?
I, Joseph Egart.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States?
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington?
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws?
And the Constitution and the laws.
Of the State of Washington?
Of the State of Washington.
And will, and will to the best of my judgment?
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability?
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully?
Truly faithfully.
And impartially perform?
And impartially perform.
The duties of police officer?
The duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Sejra Woolley?
In and for the city of Sejra Woolley.
Skagit County, Washington?
Skagit County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed?
As such duties are prescribed.
By law, so help me God.
By law, so help me God.
Congratulations. If there's anything to do, if there's anything to bring, the opinion or anything?
Oh, no.
I need you to sign. Do you want to sign here?
All right.
Okay. And then I think there may be pictures, yes.
All right.
Thank you. Perfect. I'm glad you have a fan. Thank you. I think he wants a picture over there. Did you want a picture at all? Do you want to come up, Chief, and have a picture with him? Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then we have something very special tonight, and something that's quite unusual. We are going to be swearing in eight, well, let's see, eight, I guess, I'm sorry? Yet. Eight EMS and two paramedics, correct? Could you come forward, please? Fire? We'll have you line up here. I don't know who's taking pictures, but. So I'm going to do this all at once, and before I begin, I'm wondering if I could just go down the line, and if you could give your name, because when I say aye, and you fill in your name, nobody's going to understand what you're saying. So would you go ahead and do that, and I'll start with you, Officer Joe?
Philip Chong?
Brandon Paulson?
Devin Heckard?
Chuck Cole?
Brooke Jenkins?
Jacob Rotten?
Paulie Castano?
Dylan Rumpel?
Brandon Martin?
Charlie Young?
All right. This is exciting. If you will all raise your right hand? Aye, and state your name.
I, Joseph Egart.
Do hereby declare?
Do hereby declare.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Washington?
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And that, as a member of the Sejra Woolley Fire Department?
And that, as a member of the Sejra Woolley Fire Department?
My fundamental duty is to serve the people?
My fundamental duty is to serve the people.
I swear to protect?
I swear to protect.
To safeguard and preserve life?
To safeguard and preserve life.
Health and property against fire?
Health and property against fire.
And other perils?
And other perils.
And to maintain a proficiency in the fire service?
And to maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
I recognize the badge of my office?
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust?
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
And I accept, so long as I am true to the ethics?
And I accept, so long as I am true to the ethics.
Of the fire service?
Of the fire service.
And make these promises?
And make these promises.
So solemnly, freely, and upon my honor?
So solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Congratulations. Well, congratulations. Well, congratulations. Have you been here a while? Welcome. You too. Well, congratulations. Yes. Welcome. Congratulations. Yes. You're welcome. And now those who are family members or friends who are going to be doing the pinning, if you want to come forward?
While their families are pinning the badges on these wonderful folks, I just want to take this time to thank the council and the citizens of Sejra Woolley for supporting this levy-lid lift to allow this to happen. Without this, and the last year-plus worth of work, this would not be possible, so thank each and every one of you.
So I'm going to send these back with you, and they just each need to be signed, and then it can go to Kelly afterwards. Okay, and then I have a proclamation that I'm going to read, followed by a presentation. And this is from, well, actually, it is the Central Library District Director, Rachel McDonald, who's going to be giving the presentation, but she was sharing with me that this is the Library Card Sign-Up Month. So this is the 2024 proclamation. I'm going to read this, and then she'll come forward, and she'll give us a presentation. Do you want to come up and stand with me while I'm doing this, and I can give this to you then? Thank you, Rachel. So the Library Card Sign-Up Month 2024 proclamation. Whereas libraries are essential for the education and development of children, offering everything from preschool storytimes to college and career planning resources for the high school students, nurturing literacy and a love of reading. Whereas libraries provide welcoming and inclusive spaces where individuals of all backgrounds can learn and connect, bridge-building cultures, ethnic generational and economic divides, and strengthening the social fabric of their communities. Whereas libraries are committed to creating and maintaining diverse programs and collections that reflect the communities they serve, ensuring equitable access for all. Whereas libraries assist people of all ages in navigating life's complexities, offering access to research, information, and government services that enhance productivity and fulfillment. Whereas libraries boast, boost the local economy by providing critical access to technical training and job seekers, entrepreneurs, and students. Whereas during times of crisis, libraries and their staff play a vital role in supporting communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas the shared resources provided by libraries help households save money, conserve resources, and reduce waste, offer a simple way to make a positive impact. Whereas a library card ignites creativity and empowers individuals to explore new interests and pursue lifelong learning. Whereas libraries uphold democracy by promoting civic engagement and the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Julia Johnson, Mayor, proclaim September as Library Card Sign-Up Month in Sejra Woolley, Washington, and encourage everyone to sign up for a library card today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Hold up the library card.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Which microphone?
So we'll use this one right here.
Thank you so much, Mayor Julia, and greetings, council members, city administration, and guests. My name is Rachel McDonald. I'm the new Director of the Central Skagit Library District, and I wanted to present to you something that I shared with our board. We do have one board member here, Jane Zillig. Just last month, at our board retreat, which is talking about our strategic plan implementation. The previous director, many of you probably knew, Jeanne Williams, I want to give her credit for the enormous amount of work she did, including developing a strategic plan for 2024 through 2028. It is my great pleasure to come in and help lead the staff and our partners in implementing that strategic plan. So next slide. And we're talking about about the next 16 months. What are our goals as a library district? To provide equitable and inclusive service to the city of Sejra Woolley and the entire district. So this is an overview. We have five goals in our strategic plan, and I'll read them out. Be a hub for youth engagement and opportunity. Celebrate our small-town identity. Support access to services and resources with dignity. Facilitate civic and community engagement. And increase collaboration across agencies and municipalities. And I also want to say that none of this would be possible without our amazing and dedicated staff, and they are there on the right in that photo. That's a recent photo that we took. So we'll do next slide. So we have four goals for our first phase of our strategic plan implementation. And our first goal relates to volunteering. When we talk about libraries, we think about civic engagement, and one of the ways that we can frame civic engagement is how you are involved in your community. And so one of the ways that you can be involved, obviously, is to be a volunteer. Prior to this, prior to the pandemic, we had volunteers at the library. We had a little pause there. As you can imagine, a lot of things changed in the world in 2020, and now we are looking to reengage with the community through a formal volunteer program. So we have some goals here, and our metric is to have at least 20 volunteers, whether adults or teens, volunteer at least collectively 120 hours by the end of 2025. I'm happy to report we're actually over 40 hours already, having launched our program last month, so I think we're well on track to beat 120 hours. Our outcomes are that people are going to become more aware of opportunities in their community, and that could look like increased participation in other activities in the community, and that people will better understand the library's mission, vision, and values, and as well as the value that the library brings to the community. There's an additional outcome here, which is around youth engagement. Studies have shown that youth who volunteer, and I know we have a very robust and cool program here with varsity in volunteering, so I just want to shout that out as well. That that is a precursor to academic success and building social capital outside of the classroom, as well as youth gaining pre-employment skills that are necessary for future success. So we're very excited. Some of you may know that I have a background in serving youth. That's what I did prior to coming here as Director, so I'm very thrilled to offer yet another opportunity for youth in this community. Next slide. Our second goal relates to our participation with other libraries in sharing resources. We do not have a full regional library system in Skagit County, but that doesn't mean that we can't be aligning our services and sharing resources in ways that do make sense. And so we have what is currently called the Skagit Libraries Consortium. Four libraries are governed by an intra-local agreement. Currently, that is Central Skagit, Upper Skagit Library District, La Conner Swinemish Library District, as well as the Burlington Library. We are transiting materials between these libraries. We currently offer transits once a week, which means that if you place a hold on something, it's not available at the Sejra Woolley Library, but it is available at the Burlington Library. We'll go ahead and have somebody get that for you, so you don't have to make that drive. And we're hoping to have Mount Vernon and Anacortes come on board in late 2025 and expand these services further. So again, we want to increase that collaboration, and what that means is increased access to library materials from all libraries in the region. So we're very excited to keep that work moving forward. Next slide. Another goal relates to serving people where they are, and increasingly, as we know, where people are is online. So libraries are not simply warehouses for books. We offer a great deal of resources online. And by online, I'm also meaning on your phone. If you haven't downloaded the Libby app or Hoopla, I would encourage you to do that, and if you don't have a library card, please come and see us so that we can show you how to use those resources, because we would love to have you using them. So there's many, many resources that we offer, and you never have to set foot inside of the library, though of course, we hope that you do. So we are aiming to launch a new website at the beginning of next year, and that website will have expanded accessibility features. So that will include what's known as machine translation, so that's not translation that is requiring folks to do it, people, but rather AI or automated translation. And it will also have text-to-speech in multiple languages, so not just the most commonly spoken languages in the district, but lesser spoken languages as well. We want to make sure that everyone who wants to use library resources has the ability to do so, and one of the ways that we can do that is making sure that our website is easily navigable and also accessible. And that includes people who perhaps have dyslexia, people who have low vision, people who might just need to use a screen reader for various reasons. We want to make sure that they are able to navigate our website. So we're also going to be reaching out to folks who may have been underserved by our library in the past, and that includes our Latino community, our tribal communities, long-distance commuters, and folks who are further away from the library and in more rural areas, to make sure that they're aware of these changes and that the library is also a place for them. And we hope our outcome is to have folks who have accessibility issues, people whose primary language is not English, but all residents discover and connect with library services and resources that make their lives more affordable and enjoyable. Next slide. Our final goal I'm very excited about. We are hoping to partner with the newly-formed Arts Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, the museum, and/or other local entities. We're really trying to build a big tent here to create a mural in the North Library parking lot on the building adjacent. My understanding is that that is something that was negotiated with the sale of that land. That hasn't come to fruition yet, but we are very excited to bring that to fruition as early as by this time next year. That's a pretty ambitious goal, I will say. It's not a project I've led before, but I know that the Arts Commission is looking for projects, and I would be happy to have a lot of participation and even turn this into a very public art project. So we want to engage people outside of the library, and that includes right outside the library, and create and promote opportunities to give back to the community. So we're hoping that people will gather to celebrate, to learn about the history and culture, the rich history and culture of this region, and people also, again, have more opportunities for civic involvement. So those are our four strategic goals that we hope to complete by the end of 2025. We encourage all sorts of participation in that. People can join our board meetings. People can join our Friends of the Library. People can come in and volunteer. My door is always open. I am here to serve the community, and our staff are here to take feedback and input from folks. So I really appreciate your time, and if we- So, I really appreciate your time, and if we have time for questions, I'm happy to answer, or I'm happy to circle back if I don't have the answer offhand.
Are there any questions for Rachel? Yes.
I don't have a question so much as just a comment, that you're doing a wonderful job, and I'm looking forward to the presentations, the monthly things that you guys are going to be offering, and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
I see that you have one of your board members here. Do you want to introduce her?
Yes. Jane Zillig is our former board chair and is just finishing her second term on the board. And I just want to say that part of what attracted me to this community, in addition to your beautiful library, is that we have a board that is very engaged and really moving the work of the library forward. A library is more than a building. A library is people, and a library reflects the community. And I really feel that this board does does well by that. So, you're very lucky to have such a library board in this community. I hope I didn't embarrass you.
No, but I'd also like to add, over to you, that, oh, Jean Williams, we felt it was going to be huge shoes to fill, and we are so excited with Rachel. She is bringing incredible energy and ideas and passion to the library, and I really appreciate our partnership with the City of Cedar Woolley. Thank you for all your support.
And we do appreciate, we appreciate both of you. And I know that you, it was you, you stood firm when there was a group that didn't really want to see that library go through, but thank you for doing that. I mean, it's a beautiful library, and look who it brought. It brought somebody like Rachel, and Rachel, it's just wonderful to have you here. Thank you for being a part of the community. Thank you for reaching, really, across the line. I think you reached out to me before I had a chance to reach out to you, so I appreciate that. So, yeah, anyway, so thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Okay, moving on to city administrative report. Charlie?
Yes, I've got two items this evening, and the first one is a follow-up on the rate study regarding the sewer fund, and the second will be a discussion about the best facility and intervenor status, which is a question that came up from a council member at the end of the last meeting, is what does it take to do that? So, I've had Nikki, our city attorney, doing some research on that, so we'll follow up on that, but first, we'll start with sewer rates. Bill?
Thanks. Woody, do you have the PowerPoint?
Oh, do you want to do this now? We actually have it under old unfinished business.
So, under unfinished business is the contract proposal we brought forward last week.
Okay.
And so, that's part of what this presentation's for, and then we'll figure out what to do there. That's fine. So, good evening, council. So, as part of the discussion we had last week, and we brought two brief council items for you, one of the pieces was a questions about our sewer rates and whether it's appropriate to a rate study at this time or not. So, I could put together kind of a quick PowerPoint as a way to explain what some of the logic is going through that. So, with this, we'll talk about, a little bit about what utility rate structure looks like, what a typical scope of a rate study involves, and then a little bit of the question, answering some of the question and answer about, I'm going to stand back from this. There you go. Thanks, sorry. About, you know, rate study frequency and what some of the pros and cons of those are, and then a little bit about our current rate study status of what we have with our current sewage treatment plant, and then what some of those next steps might be. Next slide. There you go. Okay. So, a little bit about just sewer rate structure. You know, we have what we call a general facility charge, and this is the facility charge contribution for when we have new development. And it's on an equivalent residential unit basis. So, whether you're a business, there is tables that show how many equivalent residential units that businesses, based on their water usage, and then your basic residential structure. So, general facility charges are a fee for development, is basically what that means. And I believe it's that fee is paid on permit application. So, this is basically a buy-in to the sewage treatment plant system. So, as our sewage treatment plant, both collection system and sewage treatment plant itself has been built over the years, those citizens have paid for that, and then in the past. And new additions to that system through new development, basically will install their own facilities to serve their specific building, but then they're also using the rest of that infrastructure to get their effluent to the treatment plant itself. So, that's what we kind of call a buy-in to the system. And, and those GFCs are set aside in a reserve fund for if we need to do a treatment plant upgrade, or do pump station upgrades, or different, even lining our old sewer system to get it back up to something that is extends its service life. So, currently in Cedar Woolley, our GFC is nine thou, a little over $9,000, so $9,626 per ERU. And so, if you have a commercial building being put in that's two ERUs, it's twice that, and so on and so forth. So, like I said, these are intended to pay or defray the costs of what new capital improvements are. So, the GFCs may not always pay for the whole new pump station or whatever, but at least if we pay for a majority of it, then rate pairs or your additional reserve funds have to pay less for that. So, we're trying to make develop, new development pay for new infrastructure as much as we can. And then, again, this goes towards this, repeating myself a little bit, because I talk ahead, I don't necessarily read my slides, I talk about them. But again, the end result is we're, this is intended to go through to system expansion and retrofits. So, then you have your monthly rates. And our current residential rates, sorry, my glasses need updated, but about $73.66 per month for each ERU. And really, your monthly rates go towards operation and maintenance and debt service. That's the main, those are the two main purposes of your monthly rates that they have to pay for. Now, monthly rates can also pay for what I call capacity reserves, which supplement ERUs, or GFCs, if you will, but there's, and debt service obligations. So, there's a portion many times you set aside, and we have, and Cedar Woolley has been setting aside a portion of the utility rate to build up the reserve fund, because we do have a treatment plant expansions coming on. So, right now, we have about $3.5 million in reserves, and that will help serve to reduce the debt service cost and be like our, our match for the grant package or the funding package we get for that. So, we have a fairly substantial reserve set aside to help cover those costs.
Bill, could you really quick, just comment on what we think the upgrade cost, total cost is going to be?
Right now, our total upgrade cost, we're probably looking at is about 18 to 20 million dollars. Next slide. Woody? Next slide, wait, there you go. So, the next piece is a little bit about rate study frequency, which was one of the questions from last week. So, for the last few years, anyway, Cedar Woolley has done an annual rate study to keep track of what any rate increases are appropriate. So, with an annual rate study, this is the most nimble reaction you get to different changes to the system that may occur over a particular year. What I'm used to doing is typically about once every three years, and I feel this is a good balance to do as well, because, like was brought up, you're not necessarily paying a consultant every you do a rate study, but at the same time, what you're trying to do is limit your risk for changes that are coming up. And one of the pieces for a five-year frequency or longer, what you run the risk of is not reacting or not having a rate to keep up. The rates may fall behind what your system needs are for, and it doesn't matter what utility that is. And so, part of this is that if you do have a rate structure that falls behind what your needs require, you then risk a substantial rate hike. And I have up here kind of a Squim example. So, when I worked for the City of Squim in the 2000s, about five years before I got there, council, their council made a decision as a way to encourage development, or encourage economic development, rather, that they would cut their GFCs in half, and that would ease the burden to encourage some of that development. And they did that for about five years, and then when I was there, we did a rate study and realized, because they were getting ready to do a sewage treatment plant upgrade as well, that in order to catch up to that shortfall that had happened at the five years, we ended up with the financial consultant made a, you know, very strong case in council that night increased the general facility charges to over $16,000 in ERU. And so, part of this, and part of what I want to be able to do too, is, and I, really, the decision we make, and we'll get to the last slide here, but really is not to allow this city to fall into that same rabbit hole. But that's kind of the consequence for doing rate studies less frequently than may be required for your system. But certainly, less frequency means you are, you know, paying that consultant less often too. So, it's a matter of finding that balance of what's right for the city. Next slide. There we go. So, now, I got a few different slides that just kind of lay out kind of where our system is right now. So, right now, we do have debt service we're paying on our treatment plant right now from the last upgrade 20 years ago. And right now, that's about $600,000 a year. And as you can see, we're about at the end of that. So, the tapering off of the yellow piece of the bar graph is where we finished that debt service, and we don't owe anything more. So, and really, part of what you're trying to do when you do a treatment plant upgrade is you don't want to upgrade before you pay off your debt service. So, we're right at about the right scale in that timeframe. And then, the dark blue graph is Mark's prediction, we probably will go up to about a $900,000 a year debt service is what's being predicted. And so, we will start that debt, that debt service as we go into our new upgrade, but we will have paid off our old debt service in that timeframe. So, that's kind of how it works, and we're really right about the target that most jurisdictions want to do. What you don't want to do is enter into new debt service several years before your old debt service is paid off. And so, we're meeting that particular goal. Next slide. And this is just also another quick graph about where do, what makes up our current monthly rate right now? So, the purple portion of each one of those line graphs is what our basic operations and maintenance of the plant is. That's, and this also predicts out to 2030, yeah. And then, basically, the light blue and the green are what I was talking about, that about that capacity building. We have two different spot portions of capacity building. One's capital for outlaying rates, and the other is CIP-funded rates, basically a portion of the monthly rate that's actually going to capital improvement projects for the treatment plant. So, we have a small portion, two different flavors of it that kind of build up that capacity that we combine with our GFC revenues to perform a variety of upgrades as we need them to the plant. And then, the yellow piece of that bar graph is what our current debt service is and what our anticipated debt service may be. And that's just, again, just to show you kind of what the order of magnitude that we pay for operation maintenance versus the other pieces of debt service we have for new capital. Next slide. And this last table is basically what our percent increase of rates have been since 2018. So, in 2019, we didn't raise rates. 2020, '21, and '22, we raised by two and a half percent roughly, you know, 2.3 to 2.6%. And then, the last two years, we've increased our rates by 4%, and then we've had a projected typical increase of 4%, you know, in the upcoming years after that. And that's just an example of what, you know, this council or what the city has done with their rates in the last four to five years. Next slide. Okay, so our policy options or our next steps are basically, you know, we can proceed with doing our annual rate study that we've done for the last few years, and this is part of that unfinished business, whether we want to approve that contract. Or the other thing is, you know, council can make a determination if we just want to increase our rates by a CPI, which would, right now, has been projected at 4% recommendation. And, you know, we, I can run the sewage treatment plant utility either way. That's fine. It will keep us up appropriately with what we need to do. And the other piece is, it, there is a point where, you know, we're going to be doing our facility plan with RH2 Engineering, our wastewater treatment plant design folks group next year. And at the end of that facility treatment plan, we will understand the options that we need, that are recommended, or whatever they may be. There's some options we may elect not to do, but what our next treatment plant design upgrade is going to really look like. And at that point, that actually may be a better time to do a rate study, because we will know what those options are and be able to better anticipate what the real capital improvements are. Right now, there are a few capital improvements that we've had planned, just as a, some retrofits that we may actually delay, because it would be more appropriate just to incorporate those into our upgrade plans that we're going to have in the next two or three years. So, those types of decisions will be better fleshed out probably by this time next year. So, that's all I've got. Is there any questions I can answer?
Yes, go ahead, council on the vodka.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity for questions, and thank you for doing that research for us, Bill. Really appreciate it. I saw this come through after I got home from work, and so, it didn't really have the past trend data that I was kind of looking for, so I did it up a Google search, and Standard and Poor had an article out in 2014, and they talked about a 10% increase in Cedar Woolley in 2010 because of, like you were saying, the debt, the lean, it had to go up. But in 2013, they had a 1.4% increase, 2014, a 2.7% increase, and at that time, the cost was at 55.45, so $55.45. 2016, it went up about another 1.4% to 57.46. Then, as you showed on your slide, 2019, we were up to 63.45. So, it's nearly a 10% increase in those three years. It's not accounted for on this slide, but compound interest, we probably saw about 3% every year, or 2.7% every year, and the compound was causing that to go up. So, right now, in 2020, like you have on here, it was at 20, or 65.08, but 2024, current rate is at 73.66. Track that 10 years back, it was at 55.45. So, we've definitely increased a lot higher than inflationary rates or what we've been doing. I guess my question is, if we were to go to the 2019, 63.45 on here, and track that 10 years in the future to 89.62, that's going to be, you know, a substantial growth every year on that compound interest. Right now, PUD has had its stat at 5% increase over the last couple of years. PSE is increasing in those as well, and even double digits projected. Insurance is also. So, my concern was like, our rates are going up, and do they necessarily need to? Then, we have another rate that's going up. It's going to be in our recycling later to talk about in this pack, and that's projected at $19,200. So, it seems like we could take this, set it, you know, not do the rate study, maybe come up with a good number. I don't know if 4% is a good number, but that $19,000 that would go to that could compensate for part of that that's going to be passed to the taxpayers. We're seeing a lot of cost pass to the taxpayers. I do like the three-year plan. That makes more sense. I know that we have upgrades to do. That would be my, my counsel advice, based upon just what I Googled and what I looked up as far as our rates. I think 2.7, 3.1, probably a good, consistent, just by looking at the trend data from that point forward. But we do got to consider the community and all the other rates that are going up. We'll ask for garbage rate right after that, and we'll ask for other rates in other areas. The school levy will be on the docket. Firefighters will need more. This is a ongoing thing. Thank you for your time, and thank you for this data. One more thing. We have a projection plan for 2028 on growth, but our comprehensive plan is now calling for less personnel. So, it was causing, calling for 24,000 people by 2036, and that's kind of what we were marching to, and our upgrades, our new facility was aiming towards that. We pulled that back to 16,800 by the time we get to 2046, so now, we've got less people over a longer span. Is that weighing into the cost of that upgraded new facility?
That's, sorry, a couple of things. One, like you had said, that we had, we've adopted increases that outpace inflation a bit, and that's where that capacity building piece is part of that. So, the other piece of that is that, that's something certainly that the facility plan goes through and considers. goes through and considers, um, the different options or the different targets for growth because really, growth isn't ever linear. Sorry, I'll learn about the microphone when I smarten up. But, um, so part of that piece is that what I, uh, will see with the facility plan is that we will have a low target, a medium target, and a high target for what our growth projection is. And then, uh, we'll make a record. So part of this, when I came on board, that there was a anticipation we'd be upgrading from a two MGD plant to a 10 MGD plant, which was 10 times the size. I would expect we do not need to go that large of a plant upgrade. So Mount Vernon's 35,000 people, uh, they have a 3.65 MGD plant in the summertime and we're not going to get to 36,000 people, I don't think, for quite a long time. So, uh, you always want to design for additional capacity, not right at the capacity that your population holds. So I kind of see us probably making a choice between a four and a five MGD plant as appropriate, uh, which is, will also, of course, make things more affordable and that type of thing. So those types of things will be considered, uh, in comprehensively in our facility plan. That's why I do a facility plan first before you just launch in design.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Burns or Councilman Cox, do you have any questions?
I think you covered it nicely. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, um, Councilman.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I do appreciate the good work that, uh, has been done on this.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, uh, Bill, that was, uh, really a lot of good information.
Thanks.
Some of the suggestions you made about, uh, moving forward, uh, what we should do. Um, the, one of the things that I did like was to kind of do nothing now, um, kind of hold where we're at and see what our, um, see what our site plan is for next year. And then that way, we have a better picture of what's going to be required of getting that done and we'll have a, we'll have a better visual of what, what, and conduct the wage study at that time. I like the three-year instead of the every year. You get out to five years and you can bite yourself pretty bad doing that, um, as we've all seen time and time again. But, uh, really appreciate the information. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
One other item this evening?
Yes.
Um, so regarding the energy, uh, energy storage facility, there's a question regarding intervenor status. This is basically where a jurisdiction can petition to become, um, a, a party to the permitting process. And it's a legal process and I've asked Nikki to look into it and she's got some information to share with you all in terms of what that involves and what costs might look like to do that if the council wants to consider that. Nikki, are you ready to?
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks.
So our office did a bit of research on this issue, um, and we looked at another similar matter that went through a full adjudication process to try and get an idea of the time it would take and the cost. Um, so essentially, the next step in this is for FSSEC to issue a notice of adjudication in order to adjudicate. And at that point, um, anyone that wants to petition to intervene can do so. Um, if the council grants the request to intervene, the intervenor will then have the ability to, um, act in a, uh, in a way that, uh, is like litigation, right? You start filing motions and you move through the process objecting to the application. Um, so in this, in this case, uh, we looked at Horse Heaven Wind Project and in that case, there were 55 substantive motions filed over a, um, period of about 10 months. Um, the adjudication hearing took two weeks, a full two weeks. Um, and, um, that was also followed up with briefing, um, and additional letters and review that came after that. So, um, if the city wanted to intervene, the next step would be to wait until the, till FSSEC issues its order of adjudication, uh, then the city would file its motion to intervene and try and get intervenor status and then file motions objecting to the application. Um, we are anticipating that it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of probably 200 hours based on, um, what we saw in the Horse Heaven Wind product, project, um, which would be in the neighborhood of $50,000. Um, if you were using someone like our office, if you were using someone like Venice Feldman that's, um, you know, environmental lawyers, then you're talking, uh, three times that, um, maybe more. Um, so that's kind of the low down on the intervenor process. Um, I think there are some interesting issues here, just briefly looking at it, um, including the fact that this is an energy storage facility, which theoretically means the federal Energy Commission should also potentially be involved here. Um, so, interesting project. Uh, if you have any questions, I will take them. But, um, I, my, my knowledge at this point is rather limited because I've just started looking into this more seriously, but I'm happy to give it a shot.
Nikki, if I could, could you, uh, talk about maybe other agencies getting involved as well and how we might be able to partner up or defer costs?
So, um, my perspective is that you could file motions to intervene with the county and with the tribes and, um, essentially file me-too briefs. Um, if somebody else takes the lead in drafting the briefs, the city can come in behind them and essentially say, uh, you know, here's a brief that says ditto what they said, um, which we have done in other situations before where it doesn't make sense to duplicate efforts. Um, so that's kind of the thought process is you can, there's power in numbers. If you can get additional intervenors, um, you can split up the work or you can have, um, one party take the brunt of, um, the work on the motions and then other parties essentially file me-too briefs, um, and, you know, see how effective we can be as a, a group of multiple municipalities. And I will say as well, ultimately, FSSEC does not make the decision. It makes a recommendation to the governor, um, who then has the final decision-making authority. That doesn't, I mean, so, so you can be utilizing your political sway to try and, um, impact the outcome here as well. Um, in looking at the Horse Heaven Wind project, um, the governor seemed, uh, to want FSSEC to narrow the terms, um, of the mitigation required. And so it seemed to me that there was more emphasis on getting the energy production facilities, um, in place as opposed to maybe some of the concerns that required mitigation.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for Nikki? Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Diamond.
Nikki, what would the likelihood of, uh, a project like this trying to be done in actual city limits as well?
Um.
I know there's not currently one, but.
I think the answer to that is, it, it probably wouldn't be consistent with your zoning code, but I would have to look, um, and confirm that.
Okay.
Um, but, but the question would be about zoning. But again, FSSEC can overrule local jurisdictions and their zoning rules, right?
Correct. And so my, my question then would be, if, looking, looking into the future of that is that I, I'm not sure what the zoning is on that kind of specific, um, business and industry. Um, and so I would need to, to look into that a little bit further, but it, would it be, um, something that as a council or as a planning commission, somebody should be looking at the possibility of a moratorium or something of that sort until there are specific policies or guidelines that can be developed in order to, to encourage or, or provide our community with some, some safety features here in regards to the emergency response times and how that would all be handled and all of that? Because at the, the meeting, there was no answers to that. And if we had industrial property that is not currently protected, um, in that way, it may be zoned properly and I, you know, like, how, how could we, how would you suggest from a legal standpoint, we protect our community in that way?
So, um, I, I would need to look into whether or not a moratorium would be effective in this case because, again, um, this particular process allows these applicants to bypass the state and local permitting and go straight to this council, um, who makes the recommendation and the governor sort of trumps local and state permitting processes.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not completely certain that you could pass a moratorium that would successfully, um, prevent something like this from locating within the city of Sejro Wully. But I will do that research and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I was just one comment following up on that. So I did have a conversation with Director Glover, asking about, um, our rules and priorities as far as, uh, our industrial zoning. And that's something that he's going to look into. I do know that the county is looking to tighten up their rules, uh, to be more specific when it comes to different types of industry coming in. And, um, I've asked Glover to do that as well. That's something that we're going to do and I, hopefully, um, I'm sure he'll be working with Nikki on that, just so you're aware. We don't want them here.
Thank you. I just, we've, we have in some, we have very little industrial property here in the city of Sejro Wully and it still is within populated areas, schools and all the, all the very valid points that many people filled this room with. Um, and so I just want to make sure that if we're looking outside of our city limits, we're also taking a look at our own policies within city limits and, and kind of making sure and that we're, we're safeguarding ourselves as a community as, as well.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, thank you. All right. So, um, Nikki, you're, you're thinking it'd be around $50,000 to be involved. Um, and we don't really know where that would go, but I think, uh, you know, more as a statement to the council and, and executive branch, that it would be a show of good faith, I believe. It would be money well spent just to have our name at the table, a presence at the table. Regardless of where it goes, uh, we at least would, would be supporting all the constituents. We have, if anything, a strategic council fund, um, or we can pull with others. Even if we led the way and others can piggyback on our me-too, um, or they're, they're, they would do a me-too to ours, um, I think it would be important for all of our citizens. They clearly came out in numbers, I've only heard negative things about this from people I would have never expected to. So I wouldn't be opposed to, to doing, to using your firm for that. I think if we wanted to go higher, that would be more engagement. We can leave that for a different community, simply on cost.
Councilman Henderson? Yes, and one moment, Councilwoman Burns. Councilman Henderson?
Um, thanks, Nikki. I, I appreciate that. That's, uh, a lot of good information. And I, I would like to, uh, essentially fight with whatever we have to, uh, get rid of this. Uh, one, one of the things that worries me is, is, um, is the upfront initial cost on something that is not a guarantee because we, we have a governor who can just say yes or no and it doesn't, doesn't even matter. But, uh, Councilwoman Diamond brought up a good point about taking a look at, um, you know, getting our own house in order, um, to essentially defend what we have here and, and, uh, as well as continue to fight this in the best way that we can. We're gonna, we're gonna put in a letter to the FSSEC and a lot of other things, but I'd, I'd really like to see, um, and, um, Mr. Glover, I know he's going to take a look into that, but I, I'd really like to make sure that we just kind of get this done and over with and protect ourselves because, uh, there's, there's more coming. This isn't, this is just the first project. There's going to be more. They're going to try more, um, at every chance they get and it really hurt to pay $50,000 each time.
Yeah, I, I don't know if any of you had opportunity to talk with Robert Knoll, um, our PSE representative, but he actually said that. He stated that, that even if we are successful with this, um, you know, don't duck because the fight will go on. There'll be more of this coming. They do need, they're under a mandate by the state to produce certain kinds of power and, and an enormous amount of power. So, um, so they're going to do what they can to get these into place. Thank you for being patient, Councilman Burns. Go ahead.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, before we go forward with, uh, spending that kind of money without piggybacking off of somebody else, uh, might I suggest that we definitely contact the county, the local tribes, watershed councils, that, anyone we can think of that might have interest in that Salmon Creek or the space in general, to see if we can't work out something where we do get together and cost share for this.
That's an excellent suggestion. Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Cox, before I move away from the screen, do you have anything? You're on mute, Councilman Cox?
Do, there were a lot of, uh, you know, I, I couldn't count from Zoom, but a lot of local folks spoke out against this. Could they also be intervenors in this? I, I don't really know. Do they have standing?
Um, I have requested that their, their letters go with our letter. Their, what they have stated go with our letter.
I think it would be great to include their participation if they're okay with it.
So are we, we're talking about groups, not in individuals, right?
I think, I don't know how organized.
I think it would be different than, um, than this, it would be like if they're having an opportunity to do something as a collective and they wanted to put a letter with ours to go forward, it wouldn't be, they have representatives in the council that they've, that, and the mayor that they've elected to speak for them and then they come to us and then they also petition the, their elected officials up higher too. But yeah.
Yeah, with the public comments that have come in, I think we should send that with it.
Yeah. It is curious though that the mandates there and the, the cost per hour is like $304 per hour, uh, for energy that we would get. And if you broke that over a 20-year span, which doesn't seem likely that they would be super effective for that time, that doesn't include service, um, that's a dollar fifty an hour for four hours of use, um, over a 20-year span. And that seems like a pretty hefty rate. And we're not paying that at home, right? So, um, I don't know where they're, where the logic is.
Thank you. Anyone?
Oh, can I ask, so do we have a, so if we piggyback on somebody, that would, the 50,000 would be lower, right? Could it be substantially lower?
Well, I, I can't answer that because we don't know, um, who wants to intervene at this point, right? And so you, you don't know if somebody else wants to take the lead and, you know, file the initial briefing, um, to make it essentially easier for us to file that me-too brief. Um, so if there were others involved that were taking the lead and we could, um, sort of tag off of them, then yes, it would be less costly, um, theoretically, right? We can't predict the cost of litigation. It's, it's impossible to do. Um, and, you know, it, there may be issues with this one that are different than the issues in the Horse Heaven Wind Project, right? Because again, um, you know, Charlie made a really great point that this is not really about production, um, which is what the FSSEC has jurisdiction over, right? It's really, these are facilities that, um, take excess energy that isn't being used and then recharge the batteries and then put it back into the grid when it's needed, right? And so it's, it's not generating its own electricity, which to me, um, would suggest that there might be issues at play here that maybe weren't at play in the Horse Heaven Wind Project. And maybe we do have some federal involvement coming down the line that were, um, that, that hasn't happened yet, right? And so, um, you know, when you get the feds involved, that, that's even more, uh, more cooks in the kitchen and more work potentially. So, um, it's not possible to predict we, we did the best we could using another similar, um, adjudication process and made a guess.
Nikki, um, just opening salvo, applying for this intervenor status, sending them the paperwork necessary to do that, what would be your guesstimate on cost for that?
Um, that's not going to be significant. Uh, it, as soon as they, uh, send or put out the order, um, allowing adjudication, then it is, it's a petition to intervene and we have to show, um, that we have interests that need protecting and that it, um, we should be allowed to intervene in order to protect those interests, right? So we build off of a lot of what has already been said, right, in our petition and, um, then utilize that information to file that petition. Um, to me, it feels likely that we would have a good shot. To me, it feels likely that we would have a good shot at intervention, especially because we've got first responders that would be responding to this facility.
But also from an environmental piece, we also have the county and the tribe, which have both stated they have spent millions restoring Hanson Creek. So the environmental piece is also huge, I would speculate.
Yeah. I think that's a really good point.
Is there any other comments before we, okay. So are you looking for just kind of a consensus here, Charlie? What are you looking for?
Yeah, it would be helpful, or we can bring it back too. That's an option. But it'd be helpful to have some idea from council. I've, I've picked up on some themes here. At a minimum, it sounds like there's interest in, in at least exploring something and maybe more than that. So we could frame something up more for council in the future, but you know, if the council wants to give us a motion to go forth and explore or go forth with some kind of dollar limit, either one, we can certainly start to do that.
Mr. Hanson?
I'd like to, I'd like if we, as a city, reached out to the county and talked to them and kind of said, hey, you know, look, if this, if this was going on in our city limits, I'd say absolutely, let's lead the charge and spend the money. However, it's not. It's happening out in the county and it's happening because of, well, potentially their weak zoning laws on farmland that should have, should have gotten shored up a long time ago, in my opinion. I, I think that this is their job to spearhead and I will absolutely love to support them in that and support our constituents who don't want this here. But I, again, would expect them, because it's on, it's on their zoned property to kind of, to kind of take charge here. So I think we, we as a city need to reach out to them and say, hey, wake up, let's get going here. And, you know, we'll, we'll help out.
Can I make one last point too? At, at, at what point is Nikki, is it wise to reach out to our electeds to show our displeasure with this project?
I, I don't think there's any time that would be too early to do that. If you are feeling strongly about it, you know, I would say now's a great time to start that conversation. But again, ultimately, it is the governor that makes the decision after the recommendation from FSSEC. So the more pressure you can exert, if you feel strongly about it, then starting now is a great time.
Thank you.
I do believe the 39th did submit a letter. Okay. Yeah, okay. All right. So there's a nod of heads or what would you like to do?
Well, I think we should definitely pursue the county. I don't think we should just trust that they're going to do the right thing or be in favor. I'm sure that they are. They have, I mean, all of them are down here and they all spoke the same way. But I'm, I'm trust but verify when it comes to government. So I'm, I'm prepared to do like what we need to do to stand by the citizens who are very concerned. They paid the money for the taxes. They set up the bank accounts. It's their money. This is something that they are very concerned about, more than a lot of issues that have come up. So if we have to stand alone, I'm down to stand alone for them. But let's see what, what happens for that with the county.
We should also reach out to the tribe, the Upper Skagit too. They seem pretty strongly against it.
All right, we'll, we'll reach out and report back.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilman Burns, did you have one last comment?
Just saying again that I think we should talk with the county and the tribes as well. And then if you could, if the city administrator would report back to us where they're at, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay. And then is that everything? I had to think for a minute. Where are we? We're on reports. Okay, moving on to council reports. Councilman Loi.
I just got a quick report. We had our skateboard challenge. It was quite a success. And I need to thank Nick and Alan. They did a heck of a job being the food vendors there. And Hidden Wave did a great job of running the actual event. There's about 10 or 12 people that helped and it, it came out to be a real positive event. We're already working on next year, so.
Excellent.
I want to make sure everybody knows that we appreciated what they did to help and maybe we can get them to help next year. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kesty?
Thank you. So the meeting that we had and the, the Golden Eye came out to speak and some information came forward where I felt really deceived by PSE. So Robert Knoll did reach out to us and he wanted to do one-on-one meetings, which I was not in favor of. I think that they owe us the respect to come and answer our questions as a whole and in front of our constituents who also have the same questions. So I responded with that and I hope that he will listen to it and come forward and speak to all of us at once.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. I have a couple of different things. First, congrats to the new officer and firefighters that were sworn, sworn in tonight. We appreciate your service and look forward to having you here with the city. Secondly, I had a flyer sent to me by a constituent about a housing forum on the 19th. A couple of questions from it on the forum. Couple of questions was one, was it going to be handled the same way as the last one? And who was presenting and how was this going to roll out in regards to questions and answers? That came forward because they were very much frustrated with the way that the first forum went. Questions and answers were, or questions were on note cards, but there were only three questions provided and those were admittedly canned questions, according to the moderator at the time. And so we had a lot of constituents that were incredibly frustrated when they left because they felt like they had no questions answered. I don't have any answers to this. I have no idea who's presenting at the forum, who's answering those questions. And I'm hoping somebody can give me that information.
Yeah. Okay, so I can see where this is, this is confusing. So this forum is actually for our comprehensive plan. It's going to follow the same type of pattern that we had when we held it at the library. I think it was the end of July.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what this is for. It's to discuss the, the, the housing piece of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so who's, who's presenting and with?
It'll be, it'll be our community development group, building and permitting and, yeah, I, I, that's, I clearly can see where that was confusing.
So I will let them know that.
Yeah.
The other, I have a couple of things here. One, there's kids riding bikes in the middle of the streets, in and out of cars on Ferry Street and down Metcalf Street. This has been going on recently after school, weaving in and out of cars as if they are cars. A couple teenage boys. So if anybody, people can keep an eye out, if they see them, please be aware. If you're driving, but completely unsafe. And I've had a few people reach out to me in regards to that, just to, to make our officers aware. If somebody can let them know if they see them, that it's very unsafe for everybody involved. Piggybacking on that, a couple complaints about traffic and speeding after school again. Schools in session again. So again, we have kids coming in and out of school, speeding. So that's been brought up to me. I also have received complaints about the city calendar online. One of them is the housing forum that was housed here last month was not on the city calendar. There were several people that were pretty upset about that. They didn't see that. They look at that for a reason to come in and kind of know what's going on. It wasn't on there. They were frustrated. The other thing was the Olmsted Park groundbreaking, also not on the calendar. So again, they didn't know to show up or not. So if we can be mindful about that sorts of stuff and put it on the calendar so people can be aware and community members can come in, that would be great.
So the Olmsted, I'm going to tell you, that was a request by Larson's office, that it was by invitation only, which is why I extended it to council members and to staff. They have had issues with protesting. He had to actually cancel an event in, I believe it was Everett. So they rescheduled three times on us. And the third time, they said that it was by invitation only and they wanted to know who was coming. So we had to give them a list of who we had sent those invitations out to.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, so.
I will, I will let them know because it's posted on the city Facebook page that we had this groundbreaking with pictures and all the things. And here the community is saying, well, how come we didn't know about this? How come we weren't invited? We would have loved to be there to support it. So I think there's a catch 22 on the thought process. And then we talked a little bit about some feedback there and the possibility of looking at our own industrial zoning for future best projects and protecting ourselves. So that's all I have.
Okay, good. Thank you. Good. Councilman Henderson?
Chief McRithy will be glad to know that I haven't had any speeding complaints between the last meeting and now. I turned my phone off. But all joking aside, the, the best meeting last, at our last workshop, I was very pleased to see the community come together. I haven't seen, I haven't seen a community that passionate about anything here in Skagit County since, since 2003. So it's, that, that was really wonderful to see. A lot of great information. A lot of, a lot of people brought forth some great concerns and we hope to continue the momentum that we've built on that. It was wonderful to see all our first responders get sworn in today. That was incredible. Incredible group of young men and women who are dedicating their, their time and a lot of long hours and a lot of missed holidays. And we're really appreciative of them for that. I received an email from Robert Knoll and I invited him to, to contact the city to come in and speak to council as a whole. I, I saw that he wanted to meet us all one-on-one and it'd just be nice for, since he's the, I think his official title is the local government outreach coordinator. And I mean, what a, what a perfect time to outreach when we're all sitting right here and, you know, we can have a civil discussion. Today's the 23rd anniversary of 9/11 and it's great that we recognize that. And that is something that we need to always keep in our minds and never forget. I hope they still teach it in school. And not only did we lose a lot of people on 9/11, but it also drug us into a war that lasted over 20 years. And the countless lives that were affected, a ripple effect from one senseless act. So a day of remembrance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yeah, I do want to thank you for acknowledging the 9/11 tribute and doing the moment of silence. That is important and it definitely changed our nation forever. It changed our rights as people forever. And then it also affected the way that we go about business. Still to this day, go to the airport, right? So we did have a strategic planning meeting and that meeting had a couple of things that came up in it. We did talk about getting those strategic goals before the council. So Charlie's going to be doing that. That is a business and economic planning meeting. And so it's having some bullet points of items that would help draw in business, which would help generate tax revenue, which would help the local business succeed. And it would also generate funding for the, for the city. Those items are, there is, as recommendations to go before you guys. See where we got low hanging fruit that we can grab. See where there might be some long intentional goals that we aim for and what might be something that goes in the comprehensive plan. So looking forward to seeing your guys' thoughts on that. There are some stuff that's in there that's obviously kind of really not in our wheelhouse, supporting the Swift Center for 2.4 million. We're, we're just seeing, we don't want to see that just sit up there and continue to rot away. I mean, it's important historical structures. And there are actually empty houses up there, empty units up there that maybe Job Corps could use or other people could possibly use. And then there's just buildings that are just rotting away. So that's where we just don't want that to fall off the plate. We also had on there to talk about some lamp post options for various roads. The cost on that was an estimated $90,000 for four. So we probably will not be going forward with even presenting that before the council at all. And we'll just see how life, how, how life grows, right? If things happen with sidewalk repairs and, and opportunities, Bill's going to keep that in the back of his mind. But it was costly. And then we also put on there to get an update on the permitting process. So to move to an electronic permitting. Tom is doing an amazing job on, on spearheading that. That was one of the big things that was on your resume or that we talked about in the interview process. And it's going to really help the city get those permits moving through and then traceability. If I have, you know, a remodel for my garage or I'm waiting on a building a house, I can go in and check those and make sure that I filled it out right. It's going to assist you to, to fill it out right as you go. So that's going to be pretty awesome. Thank you very much for, for that.
Thank you. And, and just piggybacking off what you, what you were saying. So we did actually go out and apply for funding so that we could do the online permitting. So as I understand, and maybe Tom will talk more about it when he gets up here in just a few minutes, give us a brief overview. His staff, Nicole McGowan, worked closely with him on it and did a great job. So, yeah. I also want to state, let you know that we continue, as I sit on the 911 board, Skagit 911, the chair there, and we are in the process of looking for a new executive director. We have a search going out. We, I think it'll be the middle of October. That's what we're shooting for, that we will have some good, good candidates to select from. Also, in your packet, I requested that the 2025 legislative priorities be placed in there. It's the, I sit on the AWC board as well as the legislative priorities board. And some of the things that we are looking at have to do with behavioral health. I was going to pull that up for you, see if I can find it real quick, like, because I think it's, it's something that as we move forward and think about going down to Olympia, not only are we going to have our own agenda that we're going to put forward, which we'll be talking about soon, but the legislative priorities, which is fiscal sustainability and that's revising the property tax cap. And public safety, it's to support, you know, our, the juvenile system, our officers in training, funding for all of that. We also have the infrastructure investment, which is, there's a, there's five paragraphs with that and it has to do with housing development, it's maintenance and local, local maintenance and whatnot. And the last is an increase in behavioral health treatment. As we all know, behavioral health has greatly increased in the last, well, actually since COVID, but 2022 seemed to be the absolute worst and it hasn't gotten much better from there. So looking for help for those individuals. And I just want to thank the council for the funding that you did provide out of the 1590 funding that went through North Star to help get that phase two going with the behavioral health. The Star Center, which is just right there by the Life Care Center. To let you know, it's going to be a wonderful asset for the officers. It'll be an opportunity for them to be able to drop off individuals who need help right now, rather than taking them to jail or to the hospital, which we all know is extremely expensive and the wrong place for them to be. So thank you so much for that support. And with that, I am going to close.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
I just wanted to let everybody know, since I didn't know anything about it, but I got the same email from Robert Knoll and I accepted his invitation to have coffee on Friday. So I just wanted to see what he wanted to say. So I wanted to tell everyone, I didn't know that everybody was, was wanting to do a group thing. So I accepted his invitation. I'm going to see what he has to say.
I'm glad, I'm glad you did. Maybe you can report back then to us.
But I wanted to make sure, I didn't want to hide it, so.
I did too, for Friday. So maybe we should meet together.
I haven't looked at my computer since I accepted it. I'll let you know.
I did speak with him on the phone. So I've already spoken with him. But I, I also agree it would be good for our, the public, for them to come back to us and talk to the entire council and community.
All right. And so, my bad, I was remiss in allowing both you, Councilman Cox, and you, Councilman Burns, to give your reports. So since you have kind of opened up the door there, Councilman Cox, do you want to continue on? Do you have anything else to report?
I, I want to echo what was said about 911. It was the, a terrible attack on our country and a lot of very brave people responded, first responders. This was a great day to recognize our first responders. We swore, you swore in a lot of wonderful folks. It'll be keeping the city safer and healthier. I, just one quick thing. I saw in the Skagit Valley Herald, a story this week that the state is seeking Valley Herald a story this week that the state is seeking public comment on the future of I-5 in Skagit County. And I don't know if it was just a news story, but it focused on issues in Mount Vernon and Burlington. But I just want to encourage, I don't know if the city can comment on the congestion at I-5 and Cook Road, since Cook Road is so important to our community. And as somebody who commuted through that for 18 years, I can tell you as a fact that it's getting worse. And if you come up, say at 4:00, even 5:00, coming up from the south, it is, the traffic is so far backed up on the side of the road, it's dangerous. And then you add in the trains, and there's more trains than there used to be, and it's a big mess. So the city can't comment, I hope the citizens do. Thank you.
So the city has commented at our SCOG Transportation Board, which I sit on. I have brought it up on a number of occasions, as has Commissioner Janiky. And they just keep telling us that it's far too, far and away too much money, although I don't know how you put a price tag on lives, because those cars line up all the way down the freeway, alongside the freeway. And they say that they do the, they assess it by the amount of accidents. Unfortunately, I guess fender benders don't count. So they're waiting, I guess, for major accidents to happen, which is absolutely ridiculous. But I agree wholeheartedly. And please do comment, and anybody who might be listening or will be listening to this Zoom, yeah, write, write the county and let them know. That is something that needs to be addressed. I would say that's higher priority than any of the other intersections that they're actually addressing on I-5. So thank you, Councilman Cock, for bringing that up. Yeah. Councilman Burns?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. From the Business Development Committee meeting, I just wanted to thank Tom for going after the permitting process like we had talked about back when he was being interviewed. That was one of the things I was really looking forward to, because I've heard from many constituents about our permitting process and finding ways to make it easier. So thank you for that. This evening, we had a Public Safety Committee meeting. Wanted to thank both of the chiefs for that. We talked about Fire District Eight, the contract that is upcoming, and we talked about the amount of money that they are receiving for the areas that we cover all the time. Sound like, these are rough numbers, $77,000 is what they receive for the area that we constantly cover, and we received from them, I think it was $350,000 a year for services over the last three years. So it'll be good to see a more equitable update to that contract that would, that would work out a little bit better for the city covering our costs so that we can actually continue to do that for the people who live around our area. We discussed the badge pinning and also the stretcher, which we already covered. And then also the fire and police gave us an update on their call volume, some of the things that they've been seeing as well. So I wanted to thank them for that. Yonkers Park groundbreaking was fantastic. Wanted to thank Mayor and staff for setting that up. I really look forward to seeing what we, what we can do with that land and what it's going to look like when it's all done. I think that's going to be a really fantastic resource for our community. And I was happy to see so many first responders sworn in this evening. I'm glad that we were able to get those spots hired, and I hope that we can get the open positions, I believe it was five, in the police department that we really need to get filled. So I'm hoping that that, that can be happening soon as well. Considering today's date, I wanted to take a moment to thank those among us that raced into danger and towards it and not away from it. Our first responders put their citizen's safety first above theirs, and I wanted to express my deep and heartfelt gratitude to all of them, as well as my gratitude to armed forces who have put themselves in the way for a great many years after what happened at 9/11. So thank you to all of you.
All right.
That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to close our reports, and I'm going to turn it over to public comment. It is 7:33. I'm going to ask those who come forward for public comment to please try to keep it between three minutes or less. And with that, is there anybody who would like to? I have no one signed up, but I do know that Brett is coming forward. Did you want one of the forms?
No, I'm having, I have the council to see it.
Okay, okay. Why don't you use this one right here? Brett? Brett, use this one right here. Turn the blue light on. Yeah.
I remember these. Okay. Hello, Mayor, City Council, Brett Sansom, 432 Talcott Street. One thing I, Council person, Diamond, you, you brought up industrial zones. There's not a lot of industrial zone in the city that doesn't butt up against schools and residential. And when I was on the city council, it was something that was hard to change. That was a focus that they wanted, and I hope maybe you can kind of identify uses that you do not want next to schools and homes, because there's a lot of uses you could think of. I, I write the council every year and hope one day maybe a council will take it up and, and kind of review our industrial zones for their, you know, kind of compatibility in neighborhoods, because there's just not a lot you can think of that really belongs and have industrial and, you know, a high school football field or, you know, a house. So, but other than that, I just wanted, tonight I brought in, and I thank you, Mayor, for printing those up for me. You created an arts commission. I'm an arts commissioner here at the City of Cedar Woolley. And I just want you to, to thank you for creating this, because art plays an important role. And you don't realize how important it is, but in Washington State, annually, it's about $43 billion created in the creative arts. That's music, web developers, a whole range of industries. I think it's like 376,000 jobs in Washington State are in these creative fields. And, you know, it's just an economic driver that I think is unmatched. It's more jobs than ag, forest industry, and the medical services all put together. So that's, it's a tremendous economic driver for Washington State. It would be benefiting most cities who, who have this, these sort of, you know, arts, you know, it, it just, I think the average wage is something like $53,000. So I, I just, yeah, thank you for creating this, and it helps us identify the needs in Cedar Woolley. Oh, so the question I have for you is, as you see here, these are responses to a survey that we gave during Blast from the Past. We had it on the city website. I want you to consider what sort of arts would you like to see in Cedar Woolley? What, what does art mean to you? And then you could reach out to me or to any of the other commissioners on, on kind of what does art mean to you? What would you like to see here in Cedar Woolley? So I think locally, we used to have the, what do you call it? Shakespeare in the Park was founded here. Our log carving every year. I mean, it runs the gamut, you know, the, the open mic at the, at the local bar. So there's a lot of creativity that happens, and how can we support that? That's kind of our mission. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Brett. Okay, moving on to item L, unfinished business. Turning this over to you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Was there anybody online that you were going to ask? I don't know.
Is there anybody online? I didn't see any of the, go off. I didn't see any hands raised. So, yeah. Thank you, though. Yeah. All right. Not seeing anybody. We'll just move on here to the unfinished business. We have the professional services agreement and Mr. Bullock.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I gotta push that blue button. So the question of the, of conducting a sewer rate study and with the professional services agreement I brought forward to the council last week, really about the only thing I have to add to that is suggesting a potential different proposed motion based on the input we've gotten from our discussion as part of the city administrator's report. So the change of the motion that I would suggest is simply a motion to postpone conducting the sewer rate study until the fall of 2025.
I would make that motion.
All right. Okay, thank you. So are there any other questions or comments before we?
I know that we, we talked about this in great extent. There was a couple of questions that came up, but one was that Mount Vernon has 3.5 MG, I believe that's what you said?
No, no. Mount Vernon, our treatment plant total capacity is 2.07 MGD. Mount Vernon has about 3.65 MGD during the summer.
Okay. And they're 35,000, and we're at 13,000.
Generally, one MGD is a rule of, rough rule of thumb equals about 10,000 population.
And we planned for 10 MGD at some point?
Well, and I don't know the full history on that, but I do know that our oxidation ditch that we use is very big, and its ultimate capacity is 10, 10 MGD for the size that it is. We don't, we only use about a fifth of that as far as the other processes in our plant or what drive the limitation. And so I believe that was the basis to fully use the capacity of our oxidation ditch. But at the same time, and again, this is why we're doing a facility analysis, I believe that a recommendation of increasing to probably about four to five MGD is what will come out of that.
So 40,000 to 50,000 residents up to. And so how long does one of those units, the facility stay? It's about 30, 40 years?
Well, okay. So our ox, so we have some other issues with our treatment plant as well. I mean, that oxidation ditch is one of the oldest facilities on our treatment plant, and it's over 50 years old right now. And so it's given us an excellent service life. And part of our treatment plant upgrade will be to refurbish that so it's like new. But, and the last upgrade we did was a little over 20 years ago for clarifier number two and the new ultraviolet disinfection we have and some other things. So.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you very much. I think that will dramatically reduce the initial cost estimate of what we thought 18 million to be. So we might be better off than what we hoped. Thank you very much.
I would second Councilman Allen Henderson's motion to make it in 2025.
Yeah, so I have a motion that was moved by Henderson, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, the request was made to pull item number five off of the consent agenda and put it to the top of new business. This is the appointment of Jessica Jasper to the Planning Commission. And Councilman Henderson, you made that request.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mayor. I read through the letter of interest, and honestly, I could not find a better candidate to fill this spot. We have retired U.S. Chief War and Officer Four, been in Cedar Woolley for over 10 years now, volunteers and does all kinds of other stuff. This would be a fantastic addition to our planning commission. However, the, the applicant doesn't live within the, within the borders of our, of our city, just slightly to the north. And it was under my impression that anyone who serves on the Planning Commission is also a resident of the city, just like all of the elected officials have to be. The Planning Commission makes decisions based on, based on city policy moving forward. They make, they make recommendations on our comp plan. They make recommendations on our zoning rules and ordinances. I feel anybody who's in that capacity to make those recommendations and decisions should also be living in the same municipality that those decisions get put into play. And that, that is my thought process behind this particular application.
We did question that, and I'm going to turn this over to Director Glover, and he will explain how that came about.
Yes, happy to. So the way, excuse me, the way that bylaws are written for the Planning Commission is that anybody can serve as long as they are a resident within city limits or the city's UGA. And so Ms. Jasper and her family live within the UGA. And so according to our own laws, she is eligible to apply.
And I do know that she volunteers in a lot of different places here in the city of Cedar Woolley. So she's very involved within the city itself and interacts with those of us who do live within the city. Yeah, she's a great candidate. I agree wholeheartedly with you.
Madam Mayor? So I'm just wondering if it's something that we might want to change or look at if we feel that way, because I agree as well. I think that you should have a dog in the fight. And so I would be all for looking at changing that if, if the other council members feel that way, too. I'd like to hear their thoughts.
I guess my question is, how big is the UGA for Cedar Woolley?
I don't know. I agree off the top of my head, but.
It's a pretty big swath, I think. Is it?
Well, yeah, it, we just annexed in 50 acres, but so it's a little bit smaller, but yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
I would tend to agree here in the sense that I do believe that you should be living in the city limits in which you're making the policies and, and directions for in regards to its housing and its density and zoning and all of that stuff. You know, you could be in the UGA for 20, 30 years, as we see in our, our, you know, current planning. And looking back at, I mean, even the property that was just annexed in, that was in the UGA for 20-plus years. So I, I mean, I, I would be interested, our current policy does not state that. And so, you know, by all legality of our process, I, I think it is a very qualified candidate in regards to the, what was provided in paper, on paper in front of us. But I would be interested in discussing further a change in policy in the future, because it does directly affect and impact our city. And I do believe that the people that are serving the city, making those decisions for the city, should be living in it and in their decisions that are made, because that directly impacts everybody around them. And if that property is never annexed in, those can, those decisions can be continued to be made, and, and it's, you know, not in that backyard. So, you know, I just feel that that should be something that could, could, or at least should be up for discussion in a future change.
And we can, we can make that happen. We can bring.
What about this particular candidate who does fulfill our rules, even if we want to change them?
That, Paul, that, the, the candidate's not the question. The, the question was essentially the legalities of having somebody who is not a resident of Woolley proper, being on the, being on the Planning Commission. But Director Glover clued us into that within the bylaws, as long as they're within the UGA. I think this is a fantastic candidate. I, I really do. And that, that was my question, was whether or not, and, and he clarified that for me. So.
Also, I think since it's in there.
I support this candidate because they're following our bylaws and our rules. Right now, we haven't changed them yet.
Yeah, so the, it would still be in the mayor's court, since it's all the bylaws. It's not up for a council discussion. She has this whole power for appointment at that point.
Well, I'm, I'm looking for a motion. If everybody has.
Yeah.
And I'll make a motion to accept this proposal, or the, sorry.
Candidate.
Candidate for the Housing Commission or Planning Commission?
I would second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca and seconded by Councilman Henderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Is that something that we could have?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'm, I saw Charlie taking notes. So, yeah.
If, excuse me, if I could just add that Jessica is here this evening. Say aye.
I thought you were smiling for some reason.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, thanks.
We have great meetings.
Congratulations. We look forward to your service on our Planning Commission. And thank you for being willing to serve. Yeah, sometimes that's a, that's a tough one, finding good volunteers. So moving on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, that actually leads to my curiosity in this back and forth was, how many people do we get applying for these? I mean, is it one or two people? Is it sometimes that we only get someone who's in the UGA? Or like, would we, weeding out our pool of interested bodies?
We, we may get one if we're. We, we may get one. If we're really lucky, we get two. And then there's other times where we are talking with the public to see whom they might know. We do, we do put out, uh, we, uh, require, uh, what's what I'm looking for? We put out a, Kelly, you post it. Job posting, we put that out there so that people can apply if they want to apply for the position. Though it's rare, right now, as long as we're talking about it, we need another individual for the Sejowoli Housing Authority. I have been searching for four or five months now. We had, we lost two, but I was able to replace one right away, but we still need a second one. So if anybody knows anyone who lives within the city of Sejowoli.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Is that a conflict between, is that a conflict between serving on council and serving on that?
On the, uh, that's a really good question because we've never had anybody who has served on both.
Cause you can do, you can do this in school board and, but you can't do this in like a county elected position, so.
Yeah, I don't know how the rules play out regarding that. That's a great question. We'll, can we find that out for him, please?
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Yeah. Okay. So Sejowoli Housing Commission, they meet every other month. It's an important task. Okay, um, with that, we are going to move on to item number one. It's the housing forum discussion and I believe, Tom, are you going to be leading us through this?
Yes, hi. Wanted to put this on there just as a follow-up to our first housing forum discussion. What I got from the audience is they wanted a chance to have comments and questions. And I understand the setup was just a panel discussion. But what I took away from there is perhaps an opportunity to have another, our follow-up type meeting. And talking with our consultants, they have the land capacity analysis study done, which also includes looking at our population estimates and, and all of that and housing. And they are prepared to present that information. So we thought let's two birds, one stone and have a second housing forum. And that will be on Thursday, September nineteenth at the community center at, starting at six P.M. They'll do their presentation on this information and then I want to allow plenty of time for folks to ask questions and to, and to get some feedback and answers and, and, you know, if we can't, if we don't have the answers, at least write down the questions and follow up later with those, with those answers. But I think it's an opportunity I, I get from the community. There's a lot of interest in that. And so I think we should pursue that and, and like set that up. So. Anyway, and that is on the city calendar. I made sure we did that. And it's also, we also put a notice in the paper as we can sometimes have a quorum of the council and the planning commission showing up to meetings. So we wanted to cover our bases there too and make sure that we had that public announcement done. You'll have a flyer in your weekly update this week about it, so mark your calendars and help us get the word out. We'd like to see as many folks that were here that time come to the meeting on the nineteenth.
Yes, I just want to thank you because I, there was such a difference between the two meetings and you really did involve the community and let them ask questions. And it's, it's so important and I noticed the difference right off the bat. So thank you for that.
Thank you, yeah. You know, as we mentioned before, this year's comp plan update cycle includes looking at housing according to income band. So this is kind of a complexity that we hadn't done before, so I want lots of input from the public as we go about formulating these policies.
Go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. We look forward to that, that forum. And I do know that there, there was, there was a disconnect between the Legal Women Voters Housing Forum and then a more, a more comp plan oriented discussion where people's questions can get answered. There was, there was a presentation that the mayor put on during that. And I was wondering if we could get a copy of that PowerPoint because that's really good information that's in there. And that will help, that will help us with answering any questions that people ask. Cause believe it or not, we get cornered a lot and.
I understand.
And that also is good information moving forward on future discussions with our planning commission. Having those, having those numbers and being able to, being able to speak intelligently on the subject helps. So I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Was there anything specific you were looking for, Tom?
Just wanted to throw that out there and if anybody had any, I'm making a note here about getting a copy of the slide presentation and send it out to you guys as soon as we can. But any other comments or feedback, I'm.
Tom, what time was that again?
Six o'clock. That's a Thursday evening.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to item number two, which is the House Bill fifteen ninety funding, the request for proposals. And I believe, are you going to do this, Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the somewhat long awaited discussion on House Bill fifteen ninety. And I've tried to keep this at a high level just, just to get us into it. But as a refresher, House Bill fifteen ninety was a bill passed by the legislature several years ago now. The city's been collecting or receiving revenues, sales tax revenues related to it. And we've included in the packet both information on the, the bill itself as well as kind of a quick summary breakdown and a revenue report. So right now, essentially with the obligations we have, we have this year about five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of funding sitting there, but it has to be spent a certain way. So you recall with House Bill fifteen ninety, at least sixty percent of the funds collected have to be spent on bricks and mortar capital. Up to forty percent of the funds, so the remainder of the funds could be spent on, on operations. Basically, housing related services, mental health and behavioral health services as well are included in that. With the up to, with the minimum of sixty percent of the funds collected, there are strings attached to how they can be spent. They must be spent for housing for persons at sixty percent or below median income. And they must meet certain criteria, persons with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, homeless or at risk of being homeless, families with children, unaccompanied homeless youth or young adults, persons with disabilities and domestic violence survivors. So there are some strings attached to how these funds can be spent. And really what we wanted to talk with council about is we'd recommended, council had asked previously when we got into the VOA discussion, if we could solicit more ideas from agencies out there. So that's the idea of doing an RFP would be to solicit those ideas. But as we've gotten into the discussion on the comp plan, one thought that I have and a recommendation is that perhaps we wait on the RFP until we get through the comp plan housing discussion because we're then going to have visions for how we want to grow. And we could support those visions with these funds. So that's just something to think about. That's my recommendation this evening. But before we get to that discussion, I wanted to just give you a quick overview of the guiding principles that I drafted up. And this is just to make sure that we're on the same page with council. And, and these would be things that would go into the RFP. They'd be components of the RFP. The RFP itself would have a lot more context to it. It would be probably five pages long. So I didn't spend the time to do all that. I wanted to make sure we understood where you wanted to go first and I wanted to provide some thoughts on that. So obviously, first bullet on that, people have to, you know, meet the fifteen ninety restrictions. The project has to actually qualify. And then looking at sustainability, I wouldn't recommend we fund anything that's not financially sustainable if we're funding capital. So that's the second bullet. And it's important that Nikki's take on these funds is that we must essentially guarantee their sustainability and their affordability for a period of twenty-five years. So it's really important that we, we look pretty deeply at anybody building a project and their ability to sustain it. So we're, I would request they give us some kind of sustainability plan when they, when they request funds so we can actually look at that. The second piece of this would be looking at complying with all reporting requirements. This is really important to us as a city because over time we get audited on these funds and how they're spent. And so we want to put as much of that burden as we can on the agencies receiving the funds because we don't have staff here who specialize in housing, who can, who can chase that stuff around. So that's what we're asking that they do. And then looking at, this is the third bullet is something that I really think is, is the opportunity if we delay this, which is that we could require that they contribute to satisfying one or several of the housing policy goals within the city's new comprehensive plan. So that we actually, you know, directly put these revenues into making sure we're hitting, hitting those targets. And that we would have respondent site specific policies as they applied. And then below that, again, if they're going for capital funding, stating the number of units to be preserved or created with the funding and having them break down the average median income because we're going to need that data. Population those units will serve, et cetera. And if the proposals for services and not capital, then giving us background on the number of people to be served and their anticipated outcomes as well as their incomes too. I didn't mention that, but that would be another piece of it. Then a couple more bullets for capital projects. The applicant or applicants would need to demonstrate the capacity to develop, own and operate the proposed project. It's a little bit of sustainability, kind of a building on that. But also defining who the eligible applicants are. We'd see them potentially as nonprofit organizations, private, private for-profit organizations if one wanted to put something into this. Public housing authorities, public development authorities and units of local government. We did lift some language out of some other RFPs out there to, to come up with that list. And then encouraging folks to partner, encouraging agencies to partner because you can obviously, you can often leverage more out of that. And then making sure that these projects are located within the corporate limits of the city. That's, the council's been pretty clear, I think, on wanting to make sure the funds are spent in Sejowoli. So I added that as well. And so that's what I've put so far and I wanted to see if those criteria sounded good to council or if you want to make edits to those, if you want to add things to those and, and we can go from there.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go up online here first just to see since I've, I've been remiss in not getting to them. So either Councilman Cock or Councilman Burns, do you have any comments or questions regarding what Charlie has shared?
I have a few, Madam Mayor. I am opposed to delaying the RFP until 2025. I kind of feel like we move slowly as it is with things and if we delay till 2025, then that means projects roll out in 2029, right? I'd like to see us be able to advance things a little bit quicker than that. I think we all kind of have a pretty good idea of where we may or may not want to go with these funds, depending on what comes forward to us. The twenty-five years of sustainability, I would definitely like to see projects last as long as possible. But when I read RFPs from other communities like Mount Vernon, for example, I didn't notice the twenty-five years. So I'll be curious from Kelly about that, if that's an absolute requirement from the state that maybe I missed when I was looking through some of the other cities. And referencing the comp plan, I appreciate making sure that we are staying within the scope of what the city council has laid out, what the, the community has been looking for moving forward. But I also want to make sure we don't put too much of a burden on the people who are applying for this. Because I'd like to get as many options as possible in the hopes that we get the best possible opportunity for the funds that we have, the most bang for our buck. It is my big concern with this. So, you know, obviously good longevity, a well-planned out process. Someone who knows exactly how they're going to get from A to Z is deeply important. But those were my concerns reading through this.
Okay, very good. Uh, Councilman Cock, do you have anything to add before I move to the dais here?
I, I'm also not in favor of waiting until we do the comp plan. It, it seems like there's more pressing needs right now that perhaps we can address. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Councilman Lavaca, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do agree with the twenty-five year. I didn't see that. I don't interpret that. So I'd be curious on where that came from. Also with the bullet points, I think some of those items are good. But I've been talking, you know, I've, I've visited Family Promise and talked to the director there. I've visited Helping Hands, talked to the director there. Both of them have shown great interest to come in and actually meet with us at a workshop and put their plans on paper in front of us. And I have, I think it would be a wonderful idea to have that, but we haven't had that. And I would like them to be engaged on that. Those are our two biggest nonprofits who can really support our community with the children and families and our seniors. And we're not bringing them in for some reason. So we need to reach back out to them if we can or get them in here from conversation I've had. They've had a little bit of maybe resistance on getting that going, but I think it would be definitely beneficial. We almost spent pretty much all the money we had on one unit in Burlington. And we have an opportunity to do so much more with their help and not dictating them how they should be, but letting them be at the table to write this up, how it would best fit them. This isn't our money as a community. It's for what they do, what they specialize in, and we should be supporting them and asking them, how could we serve you?
Okay, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. So a capital funding application and, you know, we, we don't know what any of this is actually going to look like. I mean, these are going to be people, it could be, you know, Volunteers of America, they brought us something. Some of these other groups brought us things. I, I honestly, as, as a steward of taxpayers' funds, I completely agree with them being able to show sustainability. Absolutely. If they're getting a dime, they have to have a plan and they have to be able to execute that plan over the course of many, many years. I, I do agree with Councilman Lavaca that we've had some, we've had some certain groups, especially Family Promise, show an extreme amount of interest in coming in and, and talking to us. It'd be very nice to get them in and Rebecca Stringkey from the Helping Hands, we sat and had a discussion with her about potentially doing some, some ADU type stuff, which I do believe if they're building, that would, that would fall under the sixty percent for brick and mortar. Even, even though it's a standalone unit, it's still a unit. But the sustainability, I like that. I, I like that because if we are granting public funds, whether or not we agree with House Bill fifteen ninety or not, it, those are the stipulations. This is being taken out of our sales tax and anybody who receives taxpayer funds should be absolutely held to a certain standard. So I, I do appreciate that being in there. Does anybody else want to go? I have some more stuff.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Diamond.
You can go ahead if you're still on the same.
I'm going to switch gears, so go ahead.
I was just going to say that I would echo Councilman Lavaca as well as Councilman Henderson in regards to my thoughts on it. My other thought in all of this is that when we're granting taxpayers' dollars, that it be provided to an outfit and a program that has a proven success rate. And so issuing and approving tax dollars to projects that have zero percent success rates is not something that I can justify to our constituents when they ask me where our money is going and why it's going to these things. So, you know, I, I fully believe in some of the projects that have been going on. And, and I know that our local community engagement in regards to Family Promise and Helping Hands and their projects have both provided statistics in positive success rates in their, in their, the steps and programs and barriers that they currently have in place for those sorts of programs. And so I, I would also believe that, that whatever program is, is invested in with taxpayers' dollars should have some sort of success rate so that we can prove to our citizens and show them that this is in fact being used and useful and not continuing to go into cycles.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Henderson. Did you want to?
Yeah, so I, other than that, Charlie, I, I think you really covered all the bases here as far as the responsibility of how the money's going to be put forward. If we do put an RFP out, that doesn't necessarily mean it has to be accepted. We don't have to accept it. If we put something out and somebody comes forward to us, you know, e- even if it's one or two good ideas and they're not quite there, you know, we could provide feedback and. and, and kind of, you know, keep that as an open dialogue moving forward. I, I like that idea. I mean, delaying it till 2025, it, it has its pros and its cons, but that, that keeps people from talking to us until then, you know what I mean? And, and then the, the other question that I had was, we have somewhere north of $500,000, and this might be a Kelly question, it's in our general fund, right?
It is not.
It's not?
It's sep, it's in a separate fund, so we don't have to track it separately, it's all, or we don't have to track it outside of our accounting system, it is just tracked in its own fund.
Is it interest-bearing?
Yes, we, we don't seg, we don't, all of our money in our bank accounts and our investment accounts isn't tied to specific money. It doesn't add up to a significant dollar amount, like our investment returns for that amount of money isn't significant to the $500,000 itself, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you very much. So yeah, I, I would like to see this go forward this, maybe this year, but in a workshop, have those two there, two parties or more, to help, you know, specify what, what would help them, what would make sense. I think 25 years is too long myself, I think, you know, 10 years sustainability, if that makes sense. But I would like to know what makes sense for them. What I don't want to do is put something out that ties somebody's hand so much they don't even want to deal with it. So the only people that are applying is one unit for $500,000 because they can afford to meet all these boxes. And I think that's kind of what I think would maybe happen. So I want the local team, the team of people here that are just amazing individuals out of Seadrill Woolley, to come and shine again and, and prove Seadrill Woolley can tackle this problem with great success, as we have seen with them before. So I think that they have an opportunity to set templates with our funding, and there's their actions in their own funding, that would be something the county could look at and mimic, and other places could county could look at and mimic, too. I think there's real potential with what I've heard so far.
Are there any other comments? If not?
Yes, go ahead. Is it something that we could have at one of our work sessions, where they could come and we could actually sit around in a circle, they could tell us different things, and we can listen?
Could we do it at the next one?
Well, maybe, yeah, I don't know. We've got the budget that we're working on, I don't know, Kelly, you're the one who's keeping track of all that, I don't want to speak out of turn.
I don't have the agenda for all the future council meetings in front of me. We do have several things slated, including the 2024 budget, property tax, utility rates that are planned in the next three and a half months. I don't have the, all, all those dates in front of me now.
Madam Mayor, if I may, this is a very big, important issue for a long time, and it was the number one thing on the plate. We need to help our homeless, we need to help our hurting, we need to help those that are financially strained. I think at least getting 30 minutes with them at the table so we can move this forward would not be a stretch on our part. It's also important to us, and it's important to a lot of people. We, we have the funding, it's banking at large amounts, and, you know, we're doing what we can to kind of like make sure it's spent wisely, I think. Think it'd be worth 30 minutes at the next workshop if we can. And if we should make a motion to have that done, or make it a, something official, that works, too, at a session or something.
I'm, I'm going to play devil's advocate here. I, I'm not opposed to the idea of having them come and do a presentation, but the idea of actually trying to move forward with this in the, in the timeframe, trying to work through the budget and the other things that we have to get done, the team, I can tell you, is already very stressed, and there's a lot of pressure on them. There's always a lot of pressure the last three months of the year, simply because of the budget and what we need to do, what we need to get done. So I guess my request would be that, sure, we can have them come and do the presentation, but as far as looking at any applications, if we could delay that till 2025, when we can actually look at them and spend time with them, that, that, that would be appreciated by the staff, I'm sure.
I'm thinking more of a discussion, not a presentation. Get them around a roundtable, let's hear what would help them. You, you already made the bullet points up, we just add what, what makes sense to them, and what doesn't make sense comes out, and then if it's feasible and we all agree upon it, and then it would be the same process of putting out the RPF.
So the other question that I have is, do you want them all to sit down at the table with you all at the same time? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, it's a group discussion of people that are, be involved, and then all together, we can figure out what's going to work best for this. I mean, it should be a global discussion within our community of those who will be participating in this.
And who specifically are you thinking of?
Well, Family Promise has reached out, Helping Hands has reached out, I believe Habitat for Humanity, they're not necessarily in our community, but they are an agency.
Okay.
I'm not sure if other people have reached out to different people, but these people have gone as far as reaching out to ask for personal meetings with many of the people in the council, because they're eager and they're wanting to help the people that are coming to them saying they need help. And they're, they're saying there's a great need today, and if we can put their interest on the table and, and make that a priority of ours, too, that'd be awesome.
All right.
Madam Mayor, another party I'd like to add to that list, the YMCA, if I remember correctly, has a youth program that they do for the homeless.
Yeah, they actually, they have a couple of programs that are really excellent, they may want to discuss that with us. So did you get the Y down as well? Thank you, okay. Thank you, good suggestion. Anyone else, any suggestions? No? Okay, all right, thank you. With that, I am looking for a motion here, let's see, how would we word this?
Mayor, if I could, I, I think we're okay. I think we've got kind of consensus on where we want to go.
Perfect, 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 okay. All right. Then moving on to item number three, which is the professional services agreement, Reickert and EB Engineering, John Liner Arterial Improvement Project, and I believe Mr. Bullock, this is you?
Yes, ma'am. I will get to use of these microphones someday. So, this is the John Liner Arterial Project, which is the next segment to the west of our Roundabout, we will be constructing next year on Highway 9, John Liner and McGargo Road intersection. So currently, John Liner Road is a resi, well, i- i- it's, it's a collector street with residential housing along it. It is basically just an old county paving, pavement top with gravel, small gravel shoulders and goes right into people's driveways. And then also, there's a portion of it that has an extensive ditch on the north side. So this project will upgrade this road to urban standards with a two-lane road, curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the south side, and on the north side, there will be a three-foot buffer strip and a bicycle pedestrian path. And the intent is that this alignment would continue west on the John Liner Railroad undercrossing, which is the next project to the west that we currently have a TIB application for. So Reickert, so we put out an RFQ, and only Reickert and EB and TranTech responded. Reickert EB was selected as the preferred candidate. That's basically the cross-section of the road. So this road originally applied for funding back in 2022 through SCOG. And at that time, so one of the pieces of this is in intervening time, the environmental requirements have elevated themselves to where pretty much includes this project. Projects require a biological assessment as opposed to a letter of no effect potentially, which is much cheaper. And so, you know, the anticipated amount for preliminary engineering at that time was $226,000 plus some change, and right now, Reickert and EB's cost estimate to us is $357,000, $357,200. So this is something where the next round of federal applications through SCOG happens in April, and it's something that is right now very common with all of our Skagit County jurisdictions, are going back for supplementary money to pay for these biological assessments and that type of thing. And so that will be something I will do to make up the funding difference in preliminary engineering. We'll get another, I'm, I'm very confident I can get another $120,000 to $150,000 to make sure we cover those costs.
Okay, any questions?
Let's see here.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just double-checking to see if I have anything else to ask. But I just want to anticipate that. Oh, the other piece is the right-of-way will cost, you know, probably about $250,000, it's also Reickert and EB's estimate, but we'll step into that with a contract amendment at a future date, because you have to get NEPA completed first, which takes this environmental documentation as well. And, and, and at that appropriate time, we will have a, a good, solid estimate of what the right-of-way cost requirements are at that time. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead, yes?
I don't have a question so much as a statement, because I, as a little girl, used to play in those ditches and walk to school on that road, and it was a lot quieter at that time, and so many kids walk to and from school on that road, and so I'm very excited to have the sidewalk so they can walk safely.
And the bike path on the north side, so they can bicycle safely, too. Yes, I've, I've seen moms pushing strollers on the edge of the pavement, it drives me nuts, so, yes.
Oh, you must be up there, too. I live right up there, Ward, too, and so, yeah, it's pretty, it's a pretty awesome spot, it's a pretty awesome road. Now, I know that a lot of people have had some, you know, concerns, especially residents, that were like, I'm done, I'm moving, they're going to do a road. One guy sold his house and then realized he had nowhere to go, so he stayed. But it, it would be a tremendous improvement for our, our community, and it would be nice to see that road follow through with the sidewalk. Jones and John Liner, that would connect it all the way down to the Frutendale, and then that would connect us right into the park, which would be awesome, it'd be cool to get an archway right there. But it does leave a circuit ability to go from the Reed Street Park up to the Frutendale Park, or Homestead, into Northern State, that kind of stuff. So I'm looking forward to it, and thank you for the hard work. The road is graded as what right now, as far as like an A through F?
I'm sorry, it's a collector street.
So I mean, is traffic rating, so?
Yeah, okay, I guess maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying. So, so as opposed to a local access street, which is your typical neighborhood street, this is considered a collector street, not an arterial street like Highway 9 is.
Oh, so it wouldn't be rated as far as a one through, or an A through F? So Mark Freiber would explain to me like, okay, well, we have a road right here, and because the traffic is getting congested more around these times of day, it's going to be rated at a D, but if we do these improvements, it's going to bring it back down to a B for foreseeable time until the growth.
Sorry, you're, you're correct, you're talking about level of service and level congestion rating on the road. Right now, it's actually probably about a C, but as we begin to complete the John Liner, Jones-John Liner corridor, which will become a major alternative route to Highway 20, yes, the traffic count will increase. And, and the other part of it is coming into this comprehensive plan, there's also, I guess I'll call it a non-motorized, the new terminology is active transportation element to a concurrency management, which has to not only take into account vehicle congestion, but also whether you have appropriate multimodal facilities next to your collector streets and stuff, and this will satisfy that requirement as well.
So Roundabout goes in, Jones-John Liner Bridge gets approved, and/or through, if it ever gets approved, that's going to quickly go to a DF, more towards an F?
I wouldn't necessarily say a DF, but it certainly is going to change the nature of how we need to provide transportation systems to the people, and just your simple paved top with, with little or no pedestrian facilities, is it certainly going to impact that. So part of this, as you know, we did not receive a raise grant of $39 million for just completing the whole corridor at once, so what we will have to do is we'll have to step into urbanizing this corridor in phases, and these would be the first two phases.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Burns.
I, sorry.
I just said, go ahead.
Thank you, sorry, there's a delay. I'm in favor of keeping this project moving forward, I know there's a lot of steps to go in it, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor to execute a contract with Reickert and EB Engineering.
Second.
I have some questions for discussion, I was gonna, I was waiting for Mr. Lavaca to finish, but we have a motion in a second.
We do, we do have a motion second. Go ahead.
So, Bill, the, the amount's 357,204, so I'm looking at the, at the preliminary engineering and the right-of-way, and that's coming up at 436, so am I supposed to minus that, those two match amounts of $35,000 and $32,000?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
If you can turn up the mic.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I, okay, so for the preliminary engineering and the right-of-way, we're at 226 and 210, which is $436,000, so should I be minusing those match amounts? Who, who's paying those match amounts?
So we're paying those match amounts typically out of our REIT funding source. So the amount is $226,111, which is a match of 86.5% federal funding and 13.5% of local funding. And what I'm, and you're not subtracting those, that's basically, in order to get $226,000, the city is providing 335 of that.
Okay.
So the federal amount is roughly $190,000, I'm just doing quick math in my head. Add together 35,000 of that to equal to $226,000 total dollars to pay for preliminary engineering, the same thing for right-of-way, and the same thing for construction. And the construction funds are just the federal funds we have applied for it. We will be reconsolidating federal funds, we, we still have about a million dollars of federal funding to add to this, but Mark hadn't applied for that in the past in 2022, and so I am coming up with a plan to, to come up with a mosaic of funding to accomplish that by the time we go to a construction phase.
Okay, yeah, well, the longer we wait, the longer, the more it's going to cost.
I'm working on it.
The concrete's going up per yard right now, it's painful to buy, so.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. It's getting cold in here, is anybody else getting cold besides me? All right, moving into item four, surplus vehicle equipment, Resolution 114824. And Mr. Bullock, I believe this is you again, yeah?
Sure, I mean, this is pretty basic as far as my presentation on it, but basically we have these vehicles that are due for surplus, and, I mean, the, sorry, while I'm looking at things, but basically, those surplus vehicles and the resolution that we need to pass in order to surplus them are, you know, pretty self-explanatory, it's basically our, our old TV van that we had for our sewer camera setup. I quite honestly don't know, it's an, we have an Astro van that the Parks Department uses, and then another mower, John Deere mower, the Parks Department use, and they're at, they still have enough service life to make them valuable for sale, but at the same time, they've already been replaced by other things in the ERNR fund, and so we just want to be able to surplus this property.
I had motion to approve authorization for the merit of surplus.
Second.
The vehicles and equipment.
May I ask one question, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
What year are the vans? I'm not seeing that on there, or the equipment.
I'm sorry, I don't know it off the top of my head, I'd have to look, but I could get that back to you.
I can tell you an Astro van has to be pretty old, that's at least 20 years, I think.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Marvelous, moving on, last item of the night is the Agreement Waste Management, Inc., Recycling Processing, and Bill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So again, this is part of the story we've talked about before, but solid waste disposal rates have increased over this year. This is specifically, we have a contract with Waste Management to dispose of our recycled products. I know recycled products are fairly market-driven, and these are largely a pass-through cost. This is not something we necessarily can negotiate down to pay half this amount, but basically, those costs are going up approximately $20,000 this year overall, when we calculate out what the additional cost per tonnage is that we typically use in the city. And so in order to, and Waste Management, as I understand, is really our only option for handling recycled waste. for handling, um, uh, recycled waste. Recology is a company I've used, uh, when I was with the city of Maple Valley, but they don't operate this far north. And so, uh, really this is a, uh, a pass-through cost that we need to account for if we continue our contract with Waste Management.
Okay, any questions or comments for Bill?
Yeah, so, uh, one of the things that I read through here, uh, yesterday was, um, that we're, we're looking to redo this contract with them, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be raising our, um, our, uh, solid waste rates until probably after the new year, right?
I would say that's correct, yes.
Okay, like we, we're not even going to have that discussion until a while from now if, if we renew our contract. Because that was one of the things that, when I, when I initially saw this, I was like, oh, they want to raise our rates. Um, and we just did that like not too long ago. So I, I'd, um, it'd be embarrassing to have to field those questions just, you know, five months later, so.
Yeah, I was, uh, thinking that with the money that, I don't know if we can creatively do it, but we saved with the sewer rate that's set to that thing. Um, but, you know, apply that saving to at least the first year of this and not raise the rates until the year later. And I know there's compound interest rates and it is, it is different funds, but, um, it is one of those deals where, you know, every year or less, we do go back for more rate changes because this went up or that went up and we didn't foresee this. And, uh, it is, it is a norm, no doubt. One day we're going to lower the taxes. I think that's what the hope was at some point, right? So, yeah, lower the taxes.
My only comment, and you mentioned it, was that, um, we can't move money between those two funds, so savings in the sewer fund, um, can't be used to offset additional costs in the solid waste fund.
I'm probably wrong, but, um, so the, the 401 sewer fund, right? That, that's an enterprise fund as well as a solid waste fund. And we can't, we can't intermingle those whatsoever, even though they're both enterprise funds?
You're correct that you cannot intermingle enterprise funds, that even though they are all enterprise funds, um, they're stand alone. So they have to run as, quote, like their own business. So they can't, you know, we share things overall as a city, but, um, we have to be very specific about those funds.
Yeah, all of our enterprise funds are managed as if they were their own business, although they're managed by the city themselves. And if you, for instance, we have the ability, if we have, um, reserve funds in one and not in another, we can make an interfund loan to them, but then that has to be paid back to the original enterprise fund, although we can give ourselves very favorable interest rates, which is a good tool. But ultimately, you can't use the, uh, profits from one fund to surplus even the general fund or another enterprise fund as well.
And I would just add, if you do an interfund loan, you have three years to pay it back. It is at a certain interest rate, which I believe is the, the one that we get from the state in terms of rate of return. Um, we just retired about nine of those over the last few years. The city had done a lot of that. It's not recommended best practice unless you've got some real short-term thing you just have got to do.
Well, yeah, at that point, you're just, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul, but, um, it, there are, and we do have an obligation to provide services and those services do cost money. Um, I, I understand that just as well as everybody else. Uh, what we also need to do is be conscious of, um, the, uh, the ratepayers and the taxpayers when it comes time to do this. And I, I know that we have money in other places that, um, that, uh, we might be able to entertain in a discussion, um, moving forward. One of the things that I wanted to bring up in, uh, Public Works Committee and do an in-depth discussion, and maybe Kelly could join us, is, um, is, uh, help, help offset, uh, solid waste costs and potentially sewer costs with, um, any remaining ARPA funds that we have. And, um, and, uh, also, uh, any strategic, uh, funding that we might have within, uh, council to...
Is it called strategic funding? What is it called?
Strategic council fund.
Yeah. And, um, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to empty our pockets completely there, but we also want to make it fair to the people who we just raised our rates on in many different facets. So it's hard.
Have we used any of our stra- well, different subjects. We could save for a different time, but I don't think we've used our strategic fund this year, um, on anything. But it is advisable, at least I'm petitioning you guys to consider some sort of economic development or beautification to our town with that money, right? Come up with a good idea. Let's put something out there to do something that's reasonable. Uh, these can't cost very much to redo a roundabout or do things like that, um, that's going to beautify our town, right? That's going to build better whichever, um, if it's just sitting there. We, we can't continue to just use it for bills, right? And we've done that only, so.
Councilman Kestie?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, just one, one, Councilman Kestie?
Go ahead.
Uh, it's funny that you should bring that up because I was thinking, um, that it's a, a very nice gift back to our constituents and the money they've already put back in. If we could offset it and not have to raise or do anything by using that, we could do that and then continue to talk about the beautifying as well. Just a thought.
Okay. Councilman Burns?
So, um, with Waste Management, uh, seeing this rake, uh, increase and then seeing the previous rate increase on the tipping fees, uh, from earlier this year, I was curious of the staff, if you've ever seen in other municipalities you worked at, any way to entice more companies in so there's actually competition? Because right now it sounds like they kind of have a monopoly going here and that usually doesn't breed, uh, good pricing for our constituents. Is there anything you've seen that we could kind of reach out to companies that are further away that might consider expanding?
You know, it's, it's part of the question for other companies. I mean, when I was in southeast King County, we had the, the benefit of having two different, uh, companies, uh, Recology and Waste Management to add some of that competition. But, um, you, you know, really for another company to come into this service area, it's all about, you know, do they have, uh, an economy of scale that will support them? Uh, especially if they have, uh, long travel costs and that type of thing. You know, that'd be great, I'd welcome it, but, um, something that we can do from this city to do that, um, I don't really know how to answer that, but, um, I, I don't think it would be, uh, easy to do. I like your thought process. I'll say that, but...
So it sounds like it has to be the cities and the county, uh, getting together and going, hey, we're curious, anybody interested? Somebody want to one-up Waste Management?
I would say you'd need to probably do that on a regional level, especially, you know, um, uh, but yeah.
Thank you.
Don't know exactly how to accomplish that from my level. But yes, I, I understand what the basic philosophy, but that is, I think, the biggest impediment to somebody breaking into the area is they need an economy of scale to make it pay.
Thank you.
You know, just kind of as a side note here, when I'm looking at the materials, the description, the preparation, all those that are excluded, I always think of Councilman Owen and how he said the list always got smaller and smaller and smaller. And the exclusion has got larger. Seems to be true here too.
So you're looking for a motion on this tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the Agreement for Waste Management Recycling, Recycling Process.
Second.
Okay. So we have motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Henderson, and motion to approve authorizing the mayor to execute the contract with Waste Management, Inc. for recycling process services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, um, in the past, it's something that, uh, we've always had is Leo Jacobs coming in and giving a presentation, the breakdown of garbage and recycling and how that all is being handled and with these additional rate increases, um, as a prospect based on the tipping increases and, uh, what you're presenting with, with, uh, this current Waste Management contract, um, if we can get him on the agenda for a Public Works Committee, uh, in the near future and review all of those rates and, and have that up for discussion as well. That'd be great.
Yeah, it would be great if we can find, you know, even 19 grand out of this strategic fund or if there's a certain rate on a certain bill that we can combat to say, you know what, this year we're not going to be raising that. We were creative here, here and here. There was a thought that we needed 30 grand. We pulled together, we're not going to use that this year. We'll look at what we got to do next year. Challenge with the weight increases is that obviously it's on compound. So when you don't do it, then the next year when you do it, you miss that compound interest. But I think that we owe it to the citizens here who have been under a lot of pressure financially to at least give them a break. Yeah.
Very good, all right. Um, so, wow, we're at the end of our list. So with that, if there's nothing for the good of the order, everybody had a good evening.